Hello, welcome to the September regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for the City of Tallahassee. I'm Paul Schwer, the chairman, and here to call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum with five members present. We have two absent. Mr. Alex Rice and Ms. Sanobi McGee are absent today, but still have a quorum with five. And at this time, I would like to ask everybody to rise, and I'm going to ask Mr. Klein to lead us in pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Item number four of the agenda is read and approve the minutes from the August 18th meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion for the minutes as written.
(Inaudible).
Motion for Mr. Seaborn, or Mayor Seaborn, second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Sellers. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Hall is abstaining, but the minutes pass four to zero. All right. Item number five, general public comments on items not on the agenda. I'd like to invite anybody from the public that wishes to speak on items not on tonight's agenda, that is in purview of the Planning Commission. You'll be allotted three minutes of time. And at this time, we will let Mr. Rice get seated in here. All right, anyone from the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda at this time? Seeing none, I will close item number five of the agenda. We'll move on to reports from commissioners and staff, and I'd like to let Mr. Luthy.
Yeah. I would just like to let the commission know that the Board of Mayor and Alderman has had, I believe, two study sessions at this point discussing the sign ordinance. I know you had discussed that you wanted them to get a chance to look at it before you passed anything through, so we don't have the Planning Commission push something through that the Board is not going to want. So we've got some comments from them. We're having the city attorney take a look at the sign ordinance, make sure that we get everything legal and compliant in there. And then I believe we'll have one more round of review with the BOMA, and then I'll be coming back hopefully in a more aligned addition to what the Board of Mayor and Alderman is going to want to see. And that'll be coming back to you for your review. Depending on how that conversation goes, I may send it out ideally probably about a week or two before the meeting, so you can look at it, read it, and then if you think that there is going to be enough in that item to warrant a study session, let me know. We can set up a study session with the Planning Commission. If not, then we can discuss it at our regularly scheduled meeting and then pass on that recommendation to the Board.
Okay, so we should expect that in October?
Possibly.
Okay.
Depends on when we get it back and how long it takes to implement the changes that were already identified from the Board of Mayor and Alderman. But at this time, that's kind of the schedule I'm looking for, but I'll let you know.
So let me ask a question here. And Steve, if y'all are looking at it, is it going to be ready for us to look at it on our meeting Monday night?
We'll try to have ready for Monday night.
Because I need to put it on the study session if that's the case.
We'll try.
All right, I'll assume we're going to do that. We can always take it off if we need to. All right.
Anything else?
One last thing. I'm working with our IT department to get our iPads set up. I have Commissioner Schwer's iPad. You brought yours as well. Alex, did you bring yours? Commissioner Rice?
I never got one.
You never got an iPad? That's right, I have yours. I think we've got all of them collected at this point. They'll be turned into Adam. He's already started working on the ones that we have. And then once he gets those reformatted and set up, we'll be able to redistribute those. So ideally, at the next meeting, you should be receiving your iPad back that will be set up. We'll already have the agenda ready to go on it, and you'll have an associated email account to receive emails and all that as we send these packets out. That being said, that means that going forward, once these are distributed and you have your devices, we will no longer be printing out paper copies, because, you know, as you can see, this is quite a bit of paper, and so it just makes a bit more sense to do that electronically since we already have the devices.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Anything else from the commission?
I guess I have a couple things. So I got contacted this weekend about the Sweetwater project. As I understand, it was supposed to be on the agenda and it got pulled at last minute. Can we talk about that just a little bit?
Yes. The Sweetwater item was originally applied, and we received it in March. There is a process with the TDEC permit. TDEC takes time. So it was postponed while that was resolved, a delineation was done, and there were some more comments on that. It got resubmitted, and then we got some more comments on that resubmission. Some of the items on there were relating to stormwater and other management, which both the applicant and myself felt that with the specific conditions of that site, bringing it before the Planning Commission with comments on wastewater management would just be anticipated that the commission would most likely ask for a deferral to get those comments addressed, so that item has been deferred until the next meeting so that those comments can be addressed.
So I guess the person I spoke to thought that all the comments had been addressed earlier, and then there were some late comments that came in, and this is just a comment. We put together a new schedule so that we could try to get people on schedule, and we said we were going to get our comments returned on time. If we're not getting our comments returned on time, we need to work on that so that we're not punishing developers for this city's. And I'm not talking about you, because I know you didn't generate these comments. But, you know, it's my understanding is everything else seems to be pretty well. This one seems to be getting delayed, and I just want to make sure that we're treating this developer fairly in terms of getting our comments in on time. I think if we're having additional comments on a regular basis, we need to look at that and try to do that as well. So that's the first item. The second thing is just on the sign ordinance. I'll give everybody just kind of a real high-level overview of what the BMA and McGee's not here, but Phil jumped in last time. I kind of tried to walk us through last items, like Samuel had given us that good summary sheet of here's the things, the kind of categories we're going to change. And basically, like, the feather signs, nobody has an issue with getting rid of those. And the, you know, the last item, I think, was the sign of fee schedule and simplifying that, and everybody's all for that. All the discussion is around the temporary signs that would relate to, like, real estate and that sort of thing, and there's some feeling that maybe there's work need to be done there. So that's some of the questions we've asked. Ms. Brittany with the law office sent a nice summary. And I meant to ask you, but can you send that little summary Brittany sent us to all the board members on the Planning Commission? Because she had a nice summary of what the state of the law is that I thought was pretty useful to understand, and it will help us out there. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Trish. I was approached by one of the citizens near the property, the development out on Short Springs, that they've seen a lot of dirty water runoff into their streets, neighborhoods. And I remember when we talked about this, about when they went in, they said they'd make sure that, you know, even during the development, there wouldn't be water. They do things to prevent water from running off. Have y'all had comments from any of the other citizens? I had to ask them to contact.
A couple of months ago, I haven't had any recently.
Okay.
I didn't know of what the. But I have had them.
Yeah, so I don't know if, you know, it was brought up, that was a concern of area of the way that water runs out there, and they said everything will be done. I don't know what we do. Does the city have anything to say to them about, you know, what's been happening?
I know of one instance, and it was probably.
Same one.
A month ago as well, I think, probably the same instance.
We almost had a flash flood that day.
Yeah, during a large storm, and Public Works Department did go out, and they had some sedimentation controls that had failed there in the area of concern. And, you know, they did make sure that those were corrected and put back into place properly there, so, but I haven't heard of any since then.
I've asked them to comment, send comments to you, the pictures, videos, stuff, what's going on, so.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Sellers. All right, with that, I think that's, item number six is closed. Approval of the agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion for Mr. Sellers. Hang on. And then Rice. All right, I'll call a vote. All in favor of the agenda as written, aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained? Agenda is approved now, six to zero. Six to zero. There's no old business, so moving on to new business, subdivision plats. These are public hearings. During public hearings, the public will be permitted two minutes to speak on these David Allen Klaus, minor subdivision, final plat, a proposed final plat to create two new lots of record located at David Allen Drive, and the applicant is David Klaus. I'd like to invite the applicant forward to speak on this at this moment, at this time. Representative?
Hi, I'm Mandy Bobo. I'm with Northcut and Associates Land Surveying. Mr. Klaus is wanting to carve off two lots off of a larger farm, one for him and one for his son. We sent these off to TDEC about a month ago for restrictions. We do not have those back, and we are hoping that the Board can approve pending Mr. Charbonneau's signature.
Who is Mr. Charbonneau? Was it the TDEC?
He approves the soil sites.
Okay. Thank you. All right, these are public hearings. I'd like to invite anyone from the public to speak at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move to the staff report. Mr. Luthy, you're recognized.
Yeah. You may remember that this item, or this lot up on the other side of the drive came before you. There was a lot that got rezoned nearby to this one that came through a couple months ago, and then this request is just subdividing one of the parcels that is out on this property. It is going to be subdivided from about a three-and-a-half acre lot into a two-and-a-half acre lot and a one acre lot, and both of these are going to be used for residential.
All right, thank you, Mr. Luthy. At this time, entertain a motion from the commission?
Motion to approve subject TDEC approval, I guess. Samuel did.
All right, motion to approve the subdivision pending TDEC approval, or contingent on TDEC approval? Is that the right way to say that?
Technically, we don't really need a comment for TDEC approval. It's a required signature for the recording of the plat, so whether or not the condition is there, the plat can't be recorded until that signature is obtained.
I understand. All right. Motion for Mr. Hall.
Second.
Second for Mr. Rice. Any discussion on this? All right, with that, we'll call the vote. Motion to approve the proposed final plat of the David Allen Klaus subdivision. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained? All right, motion passes six to zero. All right, moving on to 9B, site plans. Again, these are public hearings. Broderick Street Townhome Site Plan, request for the Planning Commission to approve a site plan. The purpose of this plan is to create seven new unit townhomes, building and accommodation parking for said townhomes. The applicant is Mr. Joe Denby. I'd like to invite applicant or Mr. Sadler to.
I'm Kenny Sadler. I did the engineering for Mr. Denby on this, but it basically is creating seven townhome units there. There used to be two mobile homes on this parcel, if y'all are familiar with this, at East Lincoln and Broderick there. It was two mobile homes sitting there, and they've been removed, and so this would be cleaning up the site and then putting back the seven townhome units there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
If this is a public hearing, I'd like to invite anyone from the public to come forward at this time and speak. Seeing none, close the public hearing and move to the staff report. Mr. Luthy.
Yeah. This is a request, like you said, for seven new townhome units. These are going to be two-story townhome units. There used to be an accompanying parking lot there for the residents of said townhomes. It's on a .66 acre site. At this time, there are no outstanding planning considerations or anything comments related for this site. The only comments we do have is for the final approved plan hard copies to be delivered so that can be distributed to the Public Works Department. And outside of that, everything else received a cleared-for-approval comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Luthy. Motion?
Motion to approve pending staff comments.
All right. Motion for Mr. Rice. Second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Hall. All right, any discussion on this? Mr. Sellers, you're recognized.
Yeah, the shows that the zoning is R3, but yet the zoning map shows it's R2. Is there an error there somewhere?
This parcel had been rezoned prior. Our zoning map is still in the process of being updated.
We rezoned it? Did we rezon it, or is it rezoned?
That rezoned a while ago.
Huh?
It had rezoned prior under Mary. I don't remember who was on the specific commission when that went through.
But you did verify that it.
Yeah.
Good comment. Anything else? All right, with that, I'll call a vote. All in favor of the Broderick Street Townhome Site Plan? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained? All right. Site plan is, motion to approve the site plan, six to zero. New Rock Creek Townhome Site Plan, a request for the Planning Commission to approve a site plan. The purpose of the site plan is to create one seven-unit townhome building and one five-unit townhome building and accompanying parking lots. The applicant is Joe Denby again. Mr. Sadler, I'd like to invite the applicant at this time.
Thank you. Yeah, I did this one too. I think it's, we have everything on this to try to make this parcel a good development here for these 12 units. We may could get one more, but 12 is what seemed to fit better. So TUA is running a forest main up to this so that it will be covered by sewer, and that was one of the biggest obstacles there. But everything else is done, and stormwater detention and all designed for a two-year, 200-year storm event, so I'll answer any questions you have. And if I could, Mr. Sellers, I appreciate you bringing that up about the stormwater on the other job, and I designed that one too, if you're referring to Mr. Howard, and I was aware, again, you know, a couple or three months ago about a blowout that they had there, and I always like to be involved with that. So that's something that, please don't hesitate to say, we'll call the engineer if there's an issue. I always like being a part of any issue, because it's no good for anybody when something fails, and I was aware with Public Works, they called me themselves on that, but I'm always anxious to hear if there's something not going like it's supposed to.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sellers. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this? You're recognized. And seeing none, move to the staff report from Mr. Luthy.
Yeah, so this is a request for the Planning Commission to approve another townhome site plan. The purpose of the site plan is to get approval for a seven-unit structure and a five-unit structure. Again, just like the other one, this one has the accompanying parking included. One of the comments on this one is that if the house on, from ER-PUD, is, if the house on the site is to be demolished, contractor has to call ER-PUD for the service line to be terminated. I believe that there is still gas service, so that'll only be shut off for any construction for land disturbances to take place. And then we also have a note from TUA Water and Sewer that this one will need a wastewater pump station to be installed, and they've indicated they've already reached out to Mr. Sadler about that one. And then outside of that, I did make sure with the dumpster location, because it's kind of kitty corner to the entrance there, I made sure to point that out to Eric at Public Works, and he made sure to review it and make sure that that would be compatible with the garbage trucks to make sure that that dumpster will be accessible. We won't have any issues with that. And then outside of that, everything else received a good bill of health.
Dumpster's okay?
Yes.
All right. All right, well, with that, I'll entertain a motion for the commission?
Motion to approve subject staff comments.
Motion for Mr. Hall.
Second.
Second for Mr. Rice. All right, with that discussion, any discussion on this one? Mr. Sellers?
The, this calls out 2.19 acres for this, these buildings to be put on, and it only, it shows only about half of being used. What's the, is there any plans to add more to the rest of the land?
So I believe the back half of the site, and I might defer to Mr. Sadler, but I believe there was some, it slopes quite aggressively.
Yeah, it is because of the terrain there. There's a little wet weather creek that comes through there to avoid, so those areas, the low areas, we're just basically avoiding and using the best part. And that's what I was saying, we may could squeeze another unit in here, but we're really on the best part of the land, and no need to push it to the lower area there.
All right.
And as far as the pump station, that has been resolved with TUA, with what they wanted on that one, so we're good there.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, with that, I'll call a vote. All in favor of the new Rock Creek Townhome Site Plan? Subject to staff comments?
Aye.
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 Opposed and abstained? All right, six to zero. Site plan number three, the Reserve at Katewood Apartment Site Plan, a request for the Planning Commission to approve a site plan. The purpose of the site plan is to add to the already existing apartment complex on Cedar Lane, adding 226 units. The applicant is Frank Throneberry, and I'd like to invite the applicant or Mr. Sadler to speak at this time.
This is the last one I brought.
You've been busy.
Yeah, this is the apartment complex that I was on, Mr. Joe Lester's land there, and then Frank got, I guess, three acres from him and started the two buildings that are under construction now there, if you've noticed there, right by NHC. But they've done a really good job on taking care of everything and keeping mud off the streets and things, so, on Cedar Lane, but they've got two buildings underway now, or three, and then this is just looking at the rest of the property that are being developed into apartments, so the total, total buildings would be 226 with the entire property here being done.
All right. All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. I'd like to invite anyone from the public to come forward at this time and speak on this one. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Luthy.
Yeah. This site plan is to expand on the already approved apartments. I'm sure you all have seen the construction going on next to NHC. This is going to be, the remainder of the site will be filled out. We do have a few comments on this one, some for commenting the grading for the sidewalk along Cedar Lane, minimum slope for the six-inch roof drain collection system, pipes in the grading plan, and then again, a request for those hard copies. And then we do have some comments from Lyle for the landscape plan, and that's just allowing some accommodation, because there is some existing canopy entries on that property edge, so there's some flexibility presented there if needed to make that work. And then on this one, we did, I also reached out to Eric at the Public Works Department to, again, review the dumpster placements on these, just to make sure they're going to be compliant with our vehicles.
All right, thank you, Mr. Luthy. Motion?
Motion to approve subject staff comments.
Any discussion on this one? Mr. Hall, you're recognized, it's your motion.
I had a question, will comment and say that this is much needed for Tallahassee, but the other question I had is on the, the drive under construction, I guess, closest to NHC, but it's on Cedar Lane. Is there any plans for any sidewalks to, like, I see one on the right entrance, but I didn't see any on the left entrance, so I didn't know if there's any plans to.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there, the sidewalk will be connected on the, from the other development, the sidewalk will actually go all the way across the front of the property.
Yeah.
The entire frontage, and then there will be a sidewalk that actually goes out to the sidewalk at the street.
Is that only by Building F, or is that also by Building A?
That is by Building F. There's not one, there's not one planned on the first set-up building either.
Okay. I would just say it'd be nice if there was a little bit more ways to get there, but that's all.
Which one's building?
So Building A is the one on the left, the closest to Cedar Lane on the left, top left.
Okay. But yeah, there's frontage sidewalk all the way from.
But to actually get to the sidewalk though, that's all I was commenting on.
From the actual buildings to the sidewalk?
Yeah, building to, the only way to get to it is walk all the way down to the one on the very far right, then you can get to the sidewalk from the buildings, but.
There is a grant underway, that I don't know what the state of that is, to sidewalk Cedar Lane all the way from, I was under the impression, Wilson to the William Northern or something like that, but that was years ago, I felt like, yes.
And we're also got to consideration, hoping we can figure out how to widen Cedar Lane as well, so, we'll make a lot of sense to go sidewalk and then tear it up to put it on the top of it right away, but yeah, long-term.
See a lot of people walking down Cedar Lane, probably a lot, we're walking if we got on sidewalks.
That's true.
But.
So, question I had was, is it 226 units, including what's currently, or is it adding 226?
No, that's, that's including.
So how many are included in this phase versus your first phase?
With the 183 there.
Okay. There's 183 existing approved, and there's 226 more?
In this phase, the proposed phase, is the 183 there, and there's 43 there that's already in that.
For a total of 226.
Okay, so my note there is wrong. Okay.
If I did that, man, I'd correct.
Okay. For a total of?
Yeah.
Okay. Got you. Okay. All right. Anything else? Mr. Sellers?
Was there a traffic study done on this? It's quite a few blocks, you know.
Yeah, we received a traffic study. It's been passed our engineer.
Everything's passed fine?
It did. I didn't do the study. Rick Phillips did it. He does a lot for the city also, but he did the study, and it showed no improvements required for the development.
And you know what grade it received?
The level of services, I know he said were all good and nothing changed from this, so, but again, I didn't do the study, but it would be Cedar are better on all these on Cedar.
What district would these, if these are, you know, a lot of kids in there, what school are they going to?
I'm not sure. I'd have to, Bel Air.
Bel Air. Yeah.
I mean, we started adding lots of these. Have we, have we got any feedback from the schools on how this is going to impact our?
I have last year. I haven't checked in this year. I need to do that again.
We're starting to get some large.
Years ago, they were telling us that we were still doing okay.
I would just like to advise that the school district does have a representative that does attend some of the DAC meetings, and they are privy to all of these site plans when they come in. They do get a chance to comment and review it. We don't frequently get comment from the school, but all of this material is distributed to them, so they know about all of these developments.
Thank you, Mr. Luthy. Anything else from the commission? All right, with that, I'll call a vote. All in favor of the site plan Reserve at Katewood, the Reserve at Katewood Apartment Site Plan? Subject to the staff comments noted. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstained? Site plan approved, six to zero. All right, thank you, Mr. Sadler. We'll see you next month. All right, item number nine C on the agenda. Nine C, rezone request, Richard Miller rezone request, a request to rezone, a request for the Planning Commission to provide comment to the Mayor and Board of Aldermen regarding the rezoning of 1306 and 1308 and TBD Lot, East Lauderdale Street. The applicant is Richard Miller. I'd like to invite the applicant or representative to come forward.
Hi, Richard Miller. These three particles, we want to rezonate or agree to maximize use for development inside of that area. Would it be?
Can he speak on this at this time? Seeing none, I will close that and move to the staff comments. Mr. Luthy?
Yep. This is a request for your comment on a request to rezone from R2 to R3. This is for 1306, 1308, and a to-be-determined address lot on East Lauderdale. These three lots are, one on either side of the terminus of the East Lauderdale Street where it dead ends. And there's one additional lot that is just adjacent to these, kind of on the side of East Lauderdale. You may have noticed, if you've gone out there, there are four smaller homes that were previously constructed. Those homes, at the time, the applicant was told that they were able to have it set up in that way with the single-family residences all in one lot. However, our ordinance does not permit multiple single-family residences on a single lot. So I've been working with the applicant to find a way to get these within compliance. And the way that we found is that if this property is rezoned, then the applicant can subdivide the property appropriately, give each home its own lot, a compliant lot, and those can be brought within compliance. And then in order to allow for the development of the neighboring lot in a similar fashion, if it is also rezoned to R3, it would allow that other lot to be developed, similar to the one that already has the homes constructed on it. And we kind of tie the rest of that area in together and give some, some like lots in that dead end area and bring the existing ones in compliance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Luthy. Entertained a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second. Motion would be to send a favorable recommendation. Okay. All right, motion from Mr. Seaborn. Second from Mr. Rice. All right, any discussion on this from the commission?
So to clarify, the applicant went ahead and built two single-family homes on one single lot. Well, well, two on one lot and two on the other lot, correct?
So there were four homes on one lot. And I did find record that the applicant did have multiple meetings with prior staff and was instructed that it was able, they were able to do that, and their site plan received approval. However, it was not something that they were able to do. But it was not the fault of the applicant. They, they followed all the required procedures and asked the required staff members what they were able to do and received that instruction and then received appropriate permits and built the properties. However, it's not something that our ordinance supports. So this is an effort to, to kind of remedy that situation.
What's the primary violation there on R2? Are there just setbacks or?
It is the fact that there are multiple single-family residence dwellings on a singular lot of record.
Okay. Remind me again, what's the difference between R2 and R1 primarily?
R2, this is going from R2 to R3.
I understand that, but what's the difference between R2 and R1?
So R1 and R2, the primary difference is that R1 has larger lots, slightly larger setbacks. The big reason that you see a lot of these rezones is not actually the size of the lot, it's the frontage requirements. That's what impacts a lot of our developers is they'll have a large enough lot, but it just won't have enough road frontage to, to fit it. And so they'll have to go from R2 to R3, which goes from a 75-foot wide lot to a 50-foot wide lot. But the actual size of the lot doesn't change too much, it's just that frontage.
Would it be better in the case of just the road frontage to do a variance versus a rezone? Because there's more things to go along with a rezone than just changing the road frontage.
So with this one?
With this one in particular, there's other things involved, but.
So generally, if it is, and you have approved a couple variances for that specific requirement for leniency on the road frontage. However, with this specific case, we need the rezone to get the road frontage in compliance, setbacks in compliance, and the actual lot size in compliance. So rather than asking you to grant a variance that essentially rezones the property, it's more applicable to just have the property rezoned.
Do we know how long ago all that went down?
Construction would have finished somewhere in 2022.
Okay, so the conversations would have been like 2021 or something like that? Okay.
So I was very curious about this one. So I looked at, so we have this drawing or this map right here with one house on it. And I was curious as to where this actually came from. So I found it on ArcGIS and then found the actual date of it, of the, when that was. And that was actually February of 2024, it showed. That's, and then in December 2023, there were no houses just cleared. It looked like it would have just been cleared and just a gravel drive. And then the latest one that I could see was February 2025, there were four houses. That's what I found online, though.
But I mean, if they went through the approval process and it was all approved, I mean, they've, they've done nothing wrong.
Yeah.
Shouldn't have ever been approved.
They're probably purchased in October 2022. Over here. Page 96. Cancel.
There's four houses there. How are we rezoning to this three? He said there, he saw, there's four houses there on one lot.
We're only rezoning to three lots? We're only rezoning to three lots, is it? We're rezoning it to R3.
Yeah, but.
Which allows more than one. There's only specified 1306, 1308, and one more. Where's the fourth one?
So the, if I may clarify, there are three lots we're rezoning. Two of the lots, or one lot has a home on it. It is not one of the four homes that was constructed. One of the lots is vacant, and one of the lots has four homes on it. So the lots have not, the homes have not been subdivided, and the lot has not been subdivided. So there are four homes currently on one lot of record. And in order to subdivide that lot of record legally, to give each home its own lot, to make it compliant with our regulations, we have to rezone the property.
Next.
I have one other question. So I know, so will that be actually considered, the road in front of them be considered East Lauderdale still? And then if so, it's currently, is it currently gravel still? Or has it been paved?
I believe it has been paved. I did speak recently on the phone with a resident who lives off of East Lauderdale with some concerns about the state of the road. I'm planning on our next Wednesday meeting to talk to our Public Works Department about that, if that's something that we are maintaining, if that's something that we have to go in and look at for possible maintenance. I'm not sure what their maintenance schedule looks like for that road specifically. But East Lauderdale, the last time that I looked, was paved.
No, I'm talking about just this.
As it stands, I do not believe there is any road there.
Correct.
However, if there will be a road, when these are subdivided and a road is put in, that road will have to be built to our public road standards. So our Public Works Department will require that to be paved.
So the owner of the property will have to pay for that to be done? And then Public Works will take care of it?
So, and then I'm not, I can't speak 100% for the inner workings of how the Public Works Department handles the acceptance of roads. But generally, when a road is constructed, it's constructed to our public work standards. And then later, that road has to be dedicated to the city. And then our Public Works Department reviews the construction prior to acceptance of that. And then once it is deemed to be a, above standard road, like everything is in compliance, they will actually accept that road. It'll become part of our public road infrastructure. And then at that point, the city would maintain that.
So right now, is Public Works able to service these houses with, for, for waste?
I believe so. There was no mention that these houses do not receive service. However, I cannot speak for the Public Works Department, unfortunately.
Seems like there needs to be a turnaround down there. It's pretty narrow. About fire and other things too, as well.
So when these lots are to be finished out, that was part of the discussion that I had with the applicant in regards to why we need to rezone, is that rezoning would allow the lots to be smaller, to fit the road in with an acceptable turnaround, to allow the garbage vehicles to go down the extension of Lauderdale on turnaround. This is not a site plan for the subdivision. You will see this come before you again, because this will be a major subdivision. So you'll see a preliminary plat come through with the roadway, where the lots are going to be, utility plans, and all of that will be presented later. This is just a rezone request to allow us to prepare that, or allow the applicant to prepare that plan.
We got one last question. So I look at the, the map here, and all the properties around it, and everything's zoned R2. But in today's definition of R2, R3, would those, most of those be R3 also?
So a lot of the lots around are in, in between R2 and R3, where they're, some of them are a little bit larger than, than an R3, but not large enough to be R2. Some of them are, you know, the frontages are a little, not quite compliant. Specifically with this part of the city and the older parts of the city, we get lots that are in between zones like that, where they're not quite big enough to be one, but not, you know, small enough to be considered another. And so we get some of the difficulties where, you know, when you create new lots, they're out of place with the lots around them, because the lots around them were subdivided, you know, 40, 50 years ago. And our current regulation doesn't really allow them to mesh. So sometimes we have to pick the zone that most closely matches the surrounding lots, which may be a different zone than the lots that are currently there, have applied to them.
I would say this would definitely be an island zone with everything around it being R2. But it doesn't look like the rest are really R2 anyway, so.
Okay. Thank you. Right. With that, I'll call, call, call the question and vote. All in favor of sending a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for this rezoning request? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, Mr. Hall. And abstained. All right, so that motion passes five to one. All right, thank you. All right, the Bustamante, maybe, rezone request? Request for the Planning Commission to provide comment to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen regarding the rezoning of 203 Highland Drive. The applicant is Mr. Leonard Bustamante. Tax Matt? Okay, all right. I'd like to invite the applicant or, sir, you're recognized?
State A, Mr. Bustamante Spalvano. He is here, but he is here impaired, and so he's asking me to speak. It's, he wants to put in a, or has put in a above-ground pool. It is an area, it's zone R1, block way to R2, but anyway. It's about a pool company put there, there's some communication issues, let's just say. And I think it's about eight feet away from the fence line. It's R2, five feet, but being R1, it's code. Next door neighbors, who, it's next to, are here also. I don't want to speak for them, but it's my understanding that they have no problem. And so that's all we have to say.
All right, all right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. So I'd like to invite anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this, to come forward at this time. If you'd like to get on record, it'd be nice, but you certainly don't have to.
I'm Jim Hurford, and I'm the neighbor 205. I just wanted to let you know that me and my wife, we lived together for 10 years. We're great neighbors.
All right, appreciate your comment. All right, this is, any other, anyone else in the public who wants to speak on this at this time? All right, with that, I will turn it over to close the staff, close the public hearing and move to the staff report. Mr. Luthy?
So with this property, this is kind of a, a couple of unique factors with this property. As the applicant mentioned prior, there is R2 zoning properties one block over that are the same size lots as, as these lots here. The applicant wanted to build, or has already constructed, an above-ground pool. Part of the difficulty is this applicant's backyard is bisected by an overhead TUA utility lines, their power service, which has a, I believe it's 20 feet on either side of that line, has to be kept clear of any structures or anything. So it really limits what the applicant can, can and cannot put in their backyard. When I originally went out and looked at this property, one of the options that I considered for a way to provide some relief would be through a variance. However, our variance requires, one of the findings of fact we have to make is that the variance request is not due to a self-imposed situation, which trying to fit a pool in is, is a definition of self-imposed. So because of that, it wouldn't, it would be difficult to grant a variance for this specific case. So rather than try to grant a variance, allowing the property to be rezoned from R1 to R2 would, the only meaningful change would be the setbacks on the side would go from 10 feet to five feet. And it would allow the, the structure, well, the pool, to exist where it currently sets, so that it can be out of interference with the TUA service line. And I did look in the surrounding area. There are other homes in the exact same subdivision that are zoned R2. And then this part of the subdivision got zoned R1. This subdivision was constructed prior to that zoning being decided. So it seems there's just arbitrarily some part of this neighborhood got the R2 zone, some part of the neighborhood got the R1 zone, even though all the lots are virtually the same, same-sized houses, same-sized lots. And it's just one street over is R2, which would have not required the applicant to, to be here if that was the case. But he's on the R1 side, and so he's having difficulties fitting his pool in. And, and so I brought this before you so that I could get recommendation to send this to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, so we could rezone the property and provide relief for the homeowner in a way that would not typically be achievable via variance.
Thank you, Mr. Luthy. Entertained a motion?
Motion moved.
Motion to provide a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. Motion from Mr. Rice, second.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Seaborn. All right, any discussion on this?
I just want to say, I feel like I'd prefer seeing it a variance over a rezone.
All right. Seaborn?
I just, how did this come to anybody's attention?
So this was brought to my attention when the applicants came in. They had applied for a pool permit. When they got the pool, where they did not, they applied, paid for and purchased a swimming pool. The swimming pool company had them, there is a paperwork that they had to sign. One of those items is an agreement that you understand that the pool company is not responsible for obtaining pool permits and that you have to do that yourself. But they did not let the applicant know that until the pool had already been installed. And so once the pool had been installed, the applicant came to our office to make sure that everything was good, get their inspections and get their permit. At that time, when we were discussing the required setbacks for them, the applicant let me know that they don't think that it would, might fit within the 10 feet, at which point I went out to the property to measure the setbacks on the property line and noticed that it is, you know, I think it's eight feet, eight and a half feet off of the fence line. So it's just barely out of compliance. And then we did look at possible options of moving the pool or adjusting its location. But with the presence of that overhead, you'd, power service line, the yard really only has a few usable locations to put any structures because of that TUA service line. And so this was the, the result that we came to after trying to see if a variance could be used to help this resident. And that wasn't something that we could do. So then we came back and reviewed the zoning and the, the lots and the subdivision.
I find it interesting that we would not allow a self-imposed necessity of variance, but we will allow a rezoning on something self-imposed. I still question why we can't do a variance.
So the state of Tennessee dictates that in order to approve a variance, there are six findings of fact that we have to make. Those findings of fact, the ones that impact this one, is that the lot has to be irregular in shape or topography and not similar to those around it. The lot has to have some unnormal, abnormal natural features, so steep slopes or a sharp drop-off or a waterway. Or it has, the variance request cannot be due to a self-imposed hardship, which under the state, the state's eyes, granting a variance is, is a bigger deal than a rezone. Because, you know, we, as rezoning it, we are still allowing it to conform to our adopted rules and regulations. We're just shifting what rules and regulations it has to comply under. Whereas with a variance, we're allowing it to not comply with those rules and regulations. And there are more stipulations on us to grant departure from those rules than to just modify which rules it follows.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, I'll call the question. All right. All in favor of sending a favorable recommendation for the Bustamante rezoning request? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And abstained? All right. All right. Motion passes six to zero to send a favorable recommendation to the BOMA. With that, we are at the end of our agenda. Our next meeting is Monday, October 20th at 4:30 PM. So the, we are adjourned from the planning commission and we will open up the board of zoning appeals regular meeting. And the item number two on the agenda is reading to prove the minutes from the August 18th, 2025, Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. With that, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Sellers.
Second.
Second from Mr. Klein. With that, all in favor of the minutes as written? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstained?
Aye.
All right. We got five, one, or I'm sorry, five, zero, and one with Mr. Hall abstaining. With that, the approval agenda, do I have a, a motion to approve the agenda with nothing on it?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda as written?
Second.
From Sellers, second from Mr. Rice. All in favor of the agenda as written? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstained? All right. The agenda is accepted, six to zero. There is no old business, no new business, and we are adjourned. We will see you in October. Thank you.[1753.87]